So it is reorganization, so I will call a meeting to order.
Should we, should we be, I don't know if Maisy's coming or not, but.
Hey, we want to wait minutes?
Well, no, I was gonna say just that maybe we start, you know, with a couple more mundane things and so on and see if she shows up.
Alright.
I don't know, I, maybe that's not important, it just seems that it.
You know, Ben's not here, so we'll wait.
Yeah, yeah, otherwise we're gonna play her everything.
Alright, I can run the meeting and start off, no one else cares, and then. And then go from there, so we will put reorganization on hold, and look to review and approve the minutes of May twenty first, and also. Did you guys get a copy of March twenty eighth?
I, March twenty eighth, the normal minutes?
It's the minutes you weren't here for, so I.
But they were, uh, we approved meeting minutes at the last meeting.
Okay, now.
No, I don't know if we've.
That's impossible, because these were written up.
Donna sent me some stuff.
Right, you edited.
Sent it back to her.
And then I signed, I signed off on.
Okay, I didn't subsequently receive those, so.
Alright, so we'll have to vote them at the next meeting minutes. Alright.
Well, let's, uh.
Ms. Shaw has shown up, so we will move back to. Number one, which is reorganization, so, um, first I'm looking for nominations for Chair of the Committee for next year. Someone has to do it.
What do you, uh, what do you wanna do, you happy?
I'm happy with it for a while, if anyone else is interested. So that's, that's.
Looking for nominations.
I nominated Greg Goutrek as Chair for School Page.
Second.
A second, any other nominations? We find that a little kinda power struggle amongst the school committee, but good for the viewers at home. Nothing, alright, so seeing no other closing nominations, all those in favor of Greg being Chair?
Hi.
Hi.
I hand it off to you.
Outstanding, alright.
So you have that full list of.
Vice Chair, yes. Do I hear any interest in Vice Chair or nominations?
Last year was Doug.
I knew it, Doug. Jessica?
I'm willing to serve if nobody else steps up.
I nominate Jessica.
I'll second.
Second, alright, all in favor?
Hi. Assume you're voting for yourself, or you're not voting? Yeah, I'm voting okay.
Nomination for Secretary?
Last year was Maisy.
Indeed.
Sure.
Nominate Maisy for Secretary. Second. All in favor? Alright. Let's see what you have here. You got the thought of this stuff?
Frontier, uh.
Frontier.
And nominate Keith McFarland?
Happy to continue.
Sounds good.
Or actually, you appoint these, I believe you, we don't vote on.
You appoint everybody else, so you just ask.
Outstanding, alright. Hereby appointed, outstanding, there. Alright, uh, Union Representatives? Peter, Maisy?
I try to go to the meetings, so.
I try to go to meetings? Or Jessica?
I'm happy to mix it up with you.
Just matter really, making sure we can get to meetings often, particularly if it's often, like, I don't know if we're gonna have anything this summer, we gotta vote on anything, so.
We, there's none expected this summer, because, right, cuz of contract, there will be less of, well, we'll find out where we go with those, but. The things they will vote on will be the, things coming up will be the contract, if there's any change in upper administration, which everything's kinda been resettled and the reshuffling of chairs, so that should be hopefully static for a while. Those are the main things, I'm trying to think of, and, you know, um, maybe do joint meetings for informational, but I don't see any votes. So just, there's not a lot of action this year coming up in it, but.
Gotta have it ready in case there is. So let's see.
So what's your pleasure, Greg?
What's my pleasure? Tell you what, yeah, how about, uh, you know, Peter and, uh, Jessica? School Council Liaison. Maisy, are you still happy in that role, or?
Yeah.
You can? Collaborative Liaison.
I'll volunteer for that one.
Outstanding. Keith McFarland for that one, and Negotiations Team.
Still needs to exist, so.
He might as well stay on.
Put myself on that one. Outstanding, alright.
Sir? I think that's it, man.
So we have the May twenty first minutes to review and approve. I'm both to approve them. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Alright, outstanding. You have the financial warrants.
Sure, yes, something, uh, the warrants are going around, and we have ten again, uh, for a total of seventy-three thousand, one hundred thirty-nine dollars and thirty-seven cents. And I did print out the results for you only because I do apologize for them being so late last night, but, um, things are shifting. Very rapidly, so I spent a good chunk of the day just making sure that things were where they needed to be, so.
That, well, you mailed out yesterday?
Yes.
Okay.
But, you know, just wanted to, because it was late in the day, I didn't want to not have them available to you in that way that you could take a peek at them. Um, so I ran expenditures.
I got coffee, I don't need any of the coffee?
Oh, I need, I need.
Okay.
Um, I ran the expenditures through last Friday, so it encompasses six weeks basically, because we are so close to the end and things are so tight, um, right now, I just wanted you to have a sense of where we were as of, um, this past Friday. Because I knew they were working on warrants, um, for this meeting, so I didn't go into this week. So, uh, the last sheet in this, um, shows where we currently stand, as you can see, there are a fair number of lines that now have zero balances, because I had to, um, use them to cover expenses in other lines. Uh, so that has happened, um, you know, uh, there are still a few things out there that I know need to be, um, taken care of, so that, again, this would be as of last Friday, looking at a positive balance of about ninety-six hundred dollars. Um, which isn't huge, but at least it's in the black, and that's, um, what we can hope for. I have started the process of moving, um, the, uh, Food Service Director's salary into school choice revolving, I had to set that up within our accounting system, because we did not have it set up in any account software, and I can't do a one-sided trade transaction, so. So I've done the expenses thus far, uh, once we get the rest of that encumbered, I'll move the rest over, and then we'll make sure that the town, um, knows to move it on, on the town side as well, so that's out there. Um, I met with Darius Boblasco, um, and Ben, um, and Shelley Torita, uh, just to talk about some things that need to happen in what is going to become the art room, which is now the Out of School Time Room. So there's a need for sync in there for all the obvious reasons, lots of paint and fun, stuff like that, um, need for storage, obviously, for all of the supplies in there, uh, need for a, uh, digital projector, you know, that kind of thing, so. We have some rough estimates on that, and then, you know, our school time program's gonna move into the cafeteria, so the buzzer system that's currently in the current room, the wiring needs to be moved, and then the equipment will just be hooked up to it, so it's not like you have to buy new equipment, it's just to drop, drop new lines, um, through the, through the ceiling, um, to get that system to work in the cafeteria, um, so. So I have some rough estimates, so probably with what's remaining, and I'm guessing based on what's still out there, we'll probably land at around fourteen thousand to the good, we can take care of a fair amount of that in this fiscal year, so. Again, you're not starting fiscal twenty at a disadvantage because of a retrofit to a classroom that wasn't unknown at the time that the budget was built, so.
So I'm not sure, hurt directly, you can do all of that stuff for most of that stuff?
Most of it, so I can get most of it off the plate, I think, um, so that there would be very little that you would have to take out of fiscal twenty.
The stuff you have encumbered, you have encumbered under building repairs, a little over six thousand dollars.
Right.
Is that for this sort of stuff, or is that other stuff?
Um, some of that is stuff that's already encumbered for things that are still in the pipeline and invoices have not yet been paid, um, some of that is for, um, building supplies that have not yet been, um, that, you know, there's not been much of anything done with those, um, and then, um, you know. What's left over in that line certainly will use to do that, so that's why I didn't designate anything as being left over in that, in that line, because I knew we would be harvesting that money as well, so. So that's kinda where, where we're at at this point, and there's some stipends, um, that we're waiting to come in, and a couple of other, um, last minute bills, and then once we get all of that encumbered, then we'll know what we really have, um, to be able to start that retrofit of that classroom, so.
And then you would just encumber the money and it would be done over the summer?
Right.
It's like normal procedure?
Right, exactly, yeah.
Couple questions about the finances, um. We, we talked a little bit, uh, previously about, uh, this year's school choice revenue numbers, and you were gonna pursue, uh, that possibly in Boston to make su- I mean, my concern is that. We discussed last time that there may be school choice, additional school choice students here that would, 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 uh, generate revenue for us, but that, uh, you know, and it might be very small amounts, but it's still revenue.
Right.
And the question is, um, to, you know, just as when an expense comes in, you, you wanna check to make sure you're not paying too much, when you have revenue involved, you wanna make sure you're getting all of what you're supposed to be getting.
Right.
And it struck me that this may not be so simple, because every time you're saying, well, you know, we got an extra school choice here, or I think you said a couple of cases, it was going back to the first of the year, first of the school year, well, that means if we are, you know, able to get the revenue for that, that's coming out of some other town's pocket. And they may not be happy about it, and so it may be, may take some doing to, to make it happen, but it's worth it, obviously, because, you know, the money adds up.
Right, and I did speak to Rob O'Donnell, um, and he did say that once the end of the year, Sims data are pulled into the state, that's when they look at the FTEs, and there's a true-up done over the summer, so.
So that will be, I just wanna make sure that not only for the, you know, for the prorated amount of each five thousand for each kid, and even if they're only here for a month, that's.
Right.
You know, that's another five hundred bucks.
Yeah, they come FTEs, yep.
And they add up, okay, but also, and, you know, there may be some of them that have sped increments, sped increments too.
Correct.
And again, those can be, you know, big numbers too, so, um, I just, you know, if that's gonna be done over the summer, and we're changing, you know, the business manager thing, and so, I mean, my sense is that before. I would consider that process to be done, somebody from our school ought to be double checking all those numbers to make sure we got what we deserved. Okay, and it's worth doing, and I, you know, uh, you know, as other circumstances, I'd volunteer to do it myself, but I, you know, I'm leery of the sort of. You know, you have your procedures, you have ways of doing things, I just wanna be, I just wanna be sure that that gets done, because we should be making sure we, when we have revenue items, that we are collecting as much as we can possibly collect. Because that gives us the resources to run this school.
And basically what happens is when they run, um, the end of the year, Sims data, um, if there's a true-up that has to happen at the state level, so. Sunbloom claims a kid, and Amers claims the same kid, who really owns him, when were they in a seat in Sunbloom versus being, versus being in a seat in Amers? And then that's how the FTEs shake out, and it's basically done by all of the student data from the Student Information System, that's how they work.
But I would hope that we are willing, if, if, that number one, we get details enough that we can determine with each particular student what the state decided the situation was, and that if that decision doesn't. Mesh with our understanding of the situation, that we don't hesitate to pursue it and to file an appeal, or something, whatever the process is.
Right, yeah, and Rob's very.
We just don't say, ah, you know, the state said this, and so we just live with it if we think that the state is wrong.
Right, exactly, yeah, and there's, there's a way to, to be able to, to check into that kind of thing, so, Rob's very good to work with, he really is.
And just for clarification, what we're talking about here is, in our, in this particular case of the numbers, is if you had somebody living in district and moved out of district during the school year, but didn't notify the school until several months later, this is, those are the numbers, the ones where we saw the change, of people that were in district and moved out. You know, there's, you know, nothing forces them besides, you know, good citizenship to let us know they moved, or the child moves between custody, or, you have a lot of moving parts, so sometimes when, you know, if you're. I'm only just mentioning it because we're like, well, how do you not know if that kid's in your district or not, that's how we not know, cuz we do have, you know, you have people that have either changed residence, you know, you know, that, you know, change who, you know. Home situations, societal rights, you know, those kind of things, and so there is some chase, there's always some chase going on in each district, so, just wanted to say, in this particular case, this is what, that's what we found when we went through the books.
Right, and sometimes there's a worry if, with, with parents, if they moved their family out of town, that they wouldn't be able to continue.
Right.
School year at Sunbloom, but.
So they don't ask, cuz they don't wanna know, cuz they don't, they don't wanna just keep static school for their kids, which I appreciate, but you'd understand that we allow, you start the school year, you can finish the school year.
Right, right, because when you do move out for the rest of the year, you're now a school choice student rather than not.
And so, but people don't, you know.
Right, because I noticed here on the latest, uh, enrollment as of for June, the number's now up to fifty-two.
Yep.
Okay, now again, they may be very small, you know, in, very small, whatever it is, FTEs or whatever the proper term is, so on, but they add up.
Absolutely.
And any sped increments, you know, also, maybe, who knows, okay, thanks.
Yes.
And then I guess I also want to know, in our budget, that we, you know, went through this winter, spring, and so on, uh, we had a projected ending balance, or goal, or whatever, but the number was seventy-six hundred dollars. That we were gonna end the year with in school choice, okay, where do we stand on that?
Um, we are pretty much within range of that, again, I'm waiting for some final dust to settle, I will know probably by the beginning of next week where exactly that has fallen, so.
And is that, is that making any assumption about possible extra revenue from these possible additional school choice?
Um, I will have to look at the revenue drops and see if there has been, I, probably, I'm guessing you won't see it right now, it usually happens right at the very end of things, as people send in numbers at the end of the year, so, uh, the true-up may happen over the summer months.
Right, but eventually.
It will catch.
I mean, I'm not really concerned whether, you know, if we were, if we were owed additional money, I don't care whether it comes in June, July, or August, I just care that it comes at some point, because, you know, what we're, and looking for is where we're gonna stand on school, school choice next year.
And, you know, that's something certainly that Shelley can monitor in terms of what does the, what are the revenue payments that are coming in over the summer months, um, and what does that look like?
And then, and then the final part of this for me is that in our budget, we projected a year-end balance in school choice here in FY twenty, like, a year from now.
Right.
Of approximately fifty thousand dollars, and from, uh, my point of view, and I think from the committee's point of view, and I think also from your point of view, Judy, um, that was, the term you used was a cushion, and it was a cushion against a, uh, possible. Uh, drop in school choice revenues, because you never know how many, you're, you know, and things change, and people that you think were gonna be coming here and having a whole year of income for that school choice.
Exactly.
Yeah, and they change their plans, okay, and so, which to me is great, okay, and to me, that is, uh, proper planning and proper budgeting and doing that, okay, and being open about doing it and so on. You know, we basically, uh, got the support of Selectment and Finance to go down this road, now, my concern, I just, you know, be open about this, is that we stick to our, uh, plan. Okay, that it is not looking at a school choice where we're gonna end the year with fifty thousand in it, but whoops, something came up and we need to spend some money on this, and something else come up, and so on, and then you turn around and buy something, you know, maybe a revenue comes in exactly the same, but somehow we spent a good chunk of that fifty thousand, that wasn't the plan, and that wasn't what we said.
And for a school of this size, my recommendation to you would be over time, cuz it's not gonna happen overnight because of all.
It'd be even more.
What we discovered, but over time, I would say that you should be upwards around a hundred thousand, just to have that sort of cushion. We all know the frailties of this building, I was principal of this school between the flood and the roof, so, you know, um, I, to be able to have a place to go, other than having to go back to the town. For something that might need some repair, um, you know.
But we can't, we can't.
Right.
We can't.
Yeah, you can't.
We can't spend it too easily.
Right.
We have to really, you know, we really have to question whether, you know, and even, you know, I'll raise the one issue, because I think in, one item of spending, I think in this year's budget, we basically have funded our tutors out of school choice, and it was just sort of. That's where whatever time we need another tutor, we just pay for it out of school choice, and I see that in our budget, having, you know, gone back over it some, that we had, uh, you know. Included in the numbers that resulted in the fifty thousand year-end balance was a ten thousand dollar item for tutors, and I'm thinking, well, we're using eighteen already this year, and there's no reason to expect it would only be ten next year, so that's already, okay, one issue that, um, will probably be hurting our year-end number, okay? I, I, I don't know if there, you know, I didn't immediately come up with any others, but I just don't want it to seem, oh, we got some money in school choice, let's just use that, and so on, because I think that's just, that's gonna shoot ourselves in the foot.
Well, and I think too, you know, what the town has done for you is to try and keep you from falling off the cliff, as it were, and so I think, you know, it's obviously, for a few years, it's gonna be.
It's gonna take some discipline.
Pretty tight spending, it's gonna take, it's gonna take you a good, probably three years or more, to get yourself in a place where you're comfortable.
All that being said, I still look at what you all have done in the past few months, given, you know, basically the, 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 the really bad financial situation we found ourselves in for a variety of reasons, and what you all have done to basically keep things going. As well as we've managed, I think it's been, you know, it needs to be acknowledged, because it hasn't been easy, and I know.
And it's for the word no for the town.
You've had to, to make a lot of tough, you made, you needed to make a lot of tough decisions, but we're basically, you know, we're ending the year in a, in a, not a great place, but it's a whole lot better than it was looking.
Yeah, absolutely.
Three months ago.
For sure.
Right, and so.
I had one very long weekend when I came across what had happened.
But I, I just wanna sort of, you know, hope we have the backbone and the resolve to stick to our plan, because it also is, to me, it's really important for credibility in the town, for getting the support that we got, I mean, we got, second year in a row, we got an override passed, and I think it's because.
It's nothing short of miraculous.
Okay, because we have done a good job, and, and you all are, you know, right out front on this for, you know, credibility, transparency, being honest about what we're doing, being hon- you know, and so on, and it's just important we keep doing that, and then when we do have a budget, that we try, do everything we can to, to, this is what we live with. Now, understand that, you know, the problem is you're running the school, and you gotta take care of whoever walks through the door, so I'm sure there're gonna be, you know, moments that we're gonna have to deal with this, and I don't know how it's gonna go, but it's just, this is our plan.
Well, I've gotten accustomed to hearing the word no, so hopefully.
Okay. I mean, I was that person, when we built the library in town, and we had a fixed amount of money, and the school was building two other buildings at the same time, and there was no way we were going back to money, and I was the numbers person, and I would sit in the weekly meetings for the year we were building that building, and every meeting, there would be at least a couple of times, I'd say, no, we can't, you know, we gotta come up with a better solution, this is too expensive, and it's no fun, you know, but that's what you gotta do, and.
And this, this particular school is a solid place in my heart, so this, when I came across this, it broke my heart to have.
I think the work you guys have done on, on getting us to where we are right now, after what was presented this year in terms of financial challenges, has been extraordinary, so, thank you.
I'm glad you're to be helpful.
Any other discussion? Who else?
Um, sorry again, one, real quick one, you come up with a trash contract, you sent us an email about that.
Don't have trash contract.
No.
Okay.
It's in the. It's coming.
Okay, that's fine.
I just, I, I did have another question, Judy, um, towards the end, uh, there was just a number in the negative, and you had made a reference to waiting on stipends to come in?
Mm-hmm.
And is, is that what it would be? How was like fifteen thousand? Page seven, salary stipends, other instructions.
That's actually school choice?
Right.
So the reason why was that there was no money ever budgeted for school choice, so that's, that zero zero three is your school choice fund, so that one page is just whatever, so that's why it shows up as a deficit, because there was never a budget and number put there, but we have, you know.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's part of the reason why we did move some salary stuff into the local budget for FY twenty, for knowing that we had to take pressure off of school choice. Right. So, hopefully, over time, you know, we can kinda incrementally get some new salaries back into the local budget, or at least pieces of it, I think that will help, having that kind of recurring pressure on school choice, which is pretty volatile in terms of revenue, um, you know, it's. We try to use it for other things that are not quite so, um, sensitive to that volatility, so.
I just wanted to say briefly also, just looking at long-term costs, uh, I've done some work looking at what we could be seeing in the far future based on some retirement stuff, and I've been approached by some teachers who have been concerned that some of that data could be seen as alarmist, and, uh, anything that's, that's out there, people shouldn't understand, it's just, uh, could be modeled, so that's just an apology, if anyone saw it, followed this.
Well, and financial forecasting, particularly in a municipality, is really tough to do, I mean, you get past a couple of years and it's, yeah, it could look like this or it could look like that, it's not as, the further out you get, the less reliable it is, so, yeah, it's hard.
Public comments, we have the public, and, let's see, non-salary, uh, non-union salary recommendations.
That is a, that's an executive session, so I don't know if it's your pleasure to go through all the reports and then put that at the end?
Let's do that.
And school reporter?
We got, you got new business?
Um, the chair's meeting, um, that was my item, so, um, basically, I wanted to kinda get just a general acknowledge, it's not a voted permission, but a general acknowledgement from the school committees, that I would like to start having meetings with the chairs when necessary, to help set agendas of the multiple districts or schools within our district, um, because there's a times when you're, when there's an order. It puts the schools at the end of the order, either a disadvantage, or, um, lack of communication through all the schools to kinda come with a, with a similar outcome, I have several examples, one of those kinda, my evaluation is a good one, in the sense, by the time it got to Sunbloom last time, you guys were on the last night of the, your meeting number four, um, of five. I've already got an input from three different committees, applied that input to it, and I was at that point going, well, you know, I've already kinda, you know, it's kinda like, I'll take your input, but it's kinda, by the time it gets through the, I used the term with Conley earlier, it's, you know, you start off with some sort of meal, and in the end, you end up with some sort of casserole, you know what I mean? Because you've kind of added so much stuff that doesn't have, really has an identification to it, and so, on those particular things, I, you know, wanna be able to meet with the chairs, um, to go through, set the agenda for the month, but I didn't wanna just start having meetings with chairs without saying it to all the committees first, that's something I wanna try next year to see if it improves. Also, we had a lot of joint meetings, and when we have joint meetings, you know, I'm setting the agenda alone, because there's no chair, well, there is a chair, but it's not as, it's not as tight, um, and sometimes I make decisions based on, um. You know, based on like length of meeting and not on what the committee wants, you know what I mean, like, like, you know, an example of that is when the business director's, um, position was voted on, I looked, that was the only thing I put on the agenda, there could've been some other things put on the agenda, but it was like, you know what, this is an emergency meeting, we're not gonna have other things agenda, get people in and out, would've been nice to have input, so, I just kinda wanted to, kinda say that as a, to everyone, and then have those meetings and see how that works, you know, um.
That was good, sure you've already set that up?
No.
Okay.
No, it'd be for next fall, it'd be something I'll start doing for the next season.
But I'm just wondering if you can break it down on that before you might just. Yeah, I, I got.
You can, or you can send someone here, Steve.
Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Let's see, it does sound like it's up for a vote necessarily.
It's not a voted item, other thing, it was more of an FY, you know, there has been past times where there were groups created, appointed by the superintendent. Which I didn't really think should be the proper way to go, and this kind of thing is what. Now, other districts have meetings with the chairs to help set the agenda, because it, basically the agenda is set by the chair with, working with the superintendent. Kind of do it a little bit backwards in the sense of, because I have someone doing all the paperwork, and so it's kind of, I set the agenda so that they get approval by the chair, but when you have multiple agendas. You know, it's, um, you know, and especially if you're trying to go a common direction, some of that conversation may need to take place prior.
That makes sense, it's just good communication, yeah, I mean, that's what we're. The party coming on board was like, we gotta look at the ways we do things and figure out ways to make it less drive you nuts and.
Especially when I'm looking for general direction and then instead of, you know, I don't know. And I'll give an example in executive session, is why we're in executive session, because of that later on, okay, so, and that would have been. And meeting the chairs would have helped us where we're at now.
Reports come in a lot. Uh, I got a couple of things, uh, first of all, I was just very brief, like, after we discussed last time, I, uh, about. Whether it would be better for me to actually be on the capital planning committee and we thought it would be and I went and, um. Talked to people at town hall and they just did appointments last night and I got myself on the committee, so I think that's useful. But all this is a congratulations, I'm not sure which is the usual situation, the other thing that is actually, um. Going on also and that we, the town just got the report yesterday was the. Study of the ADA, um, situation in town, and I don't know if you've been through this with any of the other three towns or not. But Sunderland had gotten a grant last year to hire. Furcog or whatever it's called, like the county, uh, organization to come and do a study of the towns. Uh, and not only the town's buildings, the town's sidewalks, and also the town's procedures. Uh, way it communicates with people, you know, the variety of things that, uh. Come under the general guise of, you know, making sure that our whole operations are accessible. To people with a variety of, um, disability issues and. Uh, that report was delivered to the town yesterday, um, I've got a copy here. Hard copy, I'm glad to give to whichever one of you guys who would most like to, most likes to see something in paper, I'm sure we can get some more. Um, I will also send out to everybody, uh, this whole thing is a PDF, but if one of you, I'll just shoot this over. Okay, but sometimes it's nice to see things on paper or it's easier. Um, so, uh, just, you know, what's the next, I mean, so they come up with. If you fold that out, that section there in the middle, okay, that's a list of stuff that they identified that, uh, needs attention. It doesn't need all, attention all right away, I mean, people are realistic about this, okay, and I know that, uh. One place that I'd heard talk about this was, uh, in a get-together talking about the. The new playground for the preschool that, um, there was a significant expense for the kind of. Uh, surface you needed on it, so it would be accessible for, for people in wheelchairs or whatever. And that we would be able to apply for a grant for that once we got this done, well, now we've got this done and so. Um, last night, this is at last night's selectmen meeting and, uh, Sherry is, you know, one of the first things she's gonna check is what's the. What's the calendar look like for the cycle of, of state grants on this? Because we can apply for up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars grants, and again, this is for the whole town and there are a number of buildings in town and so on, so that. Um, you know, I would expect that the process of applying for that grant is also gonna mean starting to figure out. Okay, what our priorities are in the town and that's why I think this is the kind of thing that would be both, you know, between the selectmen. And also the capital planning committee to figure this out and so we'll have a seat at the table at least, um, and so. You know, and, and, and part of the discussion, because this person who did this, the study was there and saying that. You know, there are a whole lot of things on the list, now, some of them are real small and can be fixed real simple and, you know, others are not so much that way. A few have got pretty big dollar signs attached to them, and so, you know, the question is, okay, how do we make progress? Same thing, at the same time, we've got general building needs that are also gonna be looking for capital and how do we sort of mesh all these things? So this is an ongoing thing, um, I just want you to be aware of the fact that, uh, because there will be funds available. You know, we, I, I'm not sure what process we ought to have here within the, 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 the school operation for. Looking at what's the school and thinking about what priorities are and, uh, coming, being able to come forward with some. You know, relevant, relevant information to help the town decide, you know, what, uh. What to put into the grant request, what to spend when we get grant money, because it seems, you know, pretty much a slam dunk, you'll get a chunk of money. I don't know if you got the full amount, but you should get a chunk in there, they talked about other sources for funds from, uh, community block grants. For one, and I think another one or two things were mentioned and so on, but I think that, uh, the administration, uh. Probably in this case needs to take a good look at that and, you know, start laying out some sort of priorities and some stuff, you know. And timeline and, you know, they didn't try, she said she put costs on it, really all she did was put one dollar sign, two dollar signs, or three dollar signs. Because there were so many things on there that going out and getting bids for everything just was more than they could handle, um. So this is something that is, you know, pretty significant in the sense of, you know, a lot of things that need to be done at the school. And what we're gonna, you know, highlight is stuff that we want at the top of the list.
Did you peruse that list and, and if you did, is there any major things that could come up with the school?
Well, the major things I think that were, that had dollar signs for the school were stuff dealing with bathrooms. Okay, it'd be a combination of both fixtures and, uh, space around fixtures and so on that. Um, basically the, the school was rated, uh, mostly accessible, but not totally, meaning that, uh. Entrance was no problem, but bathrooms were, you know, they were there and they were usable, but it wasn't what you really want. And so there were a number of ones there that would take some funds and there were significant dollar signs, uh, attached to actually. Uh, both the preschool playground, just as it stands now, not talking about the plans for the new one, but just the fact that now. You know, both the whole area and a number of the features in the area were not properly accessible because of the ground surface. And then they also said that that was essentially, it sounded to me, without knowing, that essentially the existing playground out on the north side of the building. Had similar issues because of the ground surface and so the accessibility was not what it should be. Now, again, I, I'm just, you know, I took a. We weren't go, you know, it was like a thirty minutes spent on this at the select, selectmen's meeting and so it wasn't going into details into all the big dollar items. Uh, and, and, and the person from, the, the person who did the report said, you know, you're not expected to. Get this stuff done, you know, in a year or two, but, you know, number one, getting the report done is excellent, okay, because that actually. Um, you know, shows that the town is making an effort, okay, uh, before I forget, one of the things that came up was. You know, one of the things that you are judged on for your accessibility is, is your information accessible, okay, and. You know, in particular these days, are, is your website accessible, and you don't think about it, but being an accessible website means, for example, someone who's colorblind. Okay, you know, still can use it just as well as anybody else, someone who has, you know, hearing problems or whatever, whatever the disability might be. Okay, can they still get the same information out of your website, and I asked about that and they said they had checked the town one and then I said, well. How about the school, because the school, that's a different operation, and I said, who did you talk to with the school, she said, well, they talked to Ben. Okay, they came here during school vacation week to go through the building, um, they talked to Ben about the website and, and what she said was that. The infer, the, the impression she had was that, you know, the folks at Frontier who, who ran all that. Understood the situation and were addressing it, okay, and beyond that, I have no idea, it's just that. There's, you know, in that report, there's a bunch of stuff about, you know, stuff in buildings. But there's also about procedures and communication and, you know, procedures, you know, are you prepared to, you know. Make accommodations, do you know what accommodations have to be made, not only for people coming who will be visiting the school or, you know, students at the school. But also for employees, okay, and situations and so on, so, um. You know, there's a lot to be done here, there's probably stuff that, you know, will affect our procedures in some way. Or the way we communicate about stuff, the way we communicate to parents and so on, uh, but there was also the message was. You know, the town, you know, good for the town for, um, you know, we're moving down the road and there will be things available to do a bunch of this, so. Okay, but I think this is something where the administration really, you know, the more you could help put together a, a, you know, a plan or a wish list. Or a priority list or whatever you want to call it and have that available. You know, as far as I'm concerned, the sooner the better, because it can always be, you know, revised and updated and so on, but, you know, with a plan and then be willing. You know, at some point before too long to come to a meeting and argue for it, okay, I think that's gonna. Um, that's in our own self-interest and it's, you know, because we're a major building in the town, it's in the town's self-interest that we be as. Smart and as prepared as possible, okay?
Yep.
So, um, I just, you know, I talked a little bit about it because I think it's important and I think we need to be, you know, proactive in, in, uh. Figuring out as much as we can do to make this school, you know, to deal with all the issues here, so, but I think we need to be doing that. And it's not, you know, again, hopefully there's funding so that once we identify what we want to do, that we'll be able to have some funds to make some progress.
I agree, I think it's really been concrete, just a, just a really good starting point for any capital projects in the future, should get a baseline, kind of what we're working with. Very thorough, very detailed, um, some of them do seem like some very simple fixes, some of them are gonna be.
She said some are incredibly simple, some is just can be done part of your normal maintenance, okay, just to get it so that, you know, stuff is the way it should be. Uh, others are gonna be much more complicated.
Sure, I noticed one of the items on there was not having furniture within eighteen inches of. In, inside the classrooms, the doorway threshold, that's an easy fix.
Right.
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 And then there are other fixes that cost a significant amount of money, so, yeah, it's, it's good. It's good to include that as part of, as part of our overall building improvement plan.
Right, and if we do chip away, it's something that needs to be reported to the town as well, that.
Right, that's the whole thing, we're, we're, we're all in this together, okay, and, and they are, you know. I mean, their interest is in how the overall town is doing and we're a big part of that, so, you know, we're all on the same side.
Absolutely.
So, we just gotta get it all, and one other thing I would just pass on that she said, she used an example of some trivial thing that you could fix easily was some. You know, rug that needed to be, rug or rubs that needed to be nailed down or tacked down or glued down or something, and immediately the response from one or two selectmen was. What are you doing with rugs in the school, because aren't they bad for air quality issues? And then it was like, well, maybe these, I mean, you know, we got off that pretty quickly, but I just thought I'd pass it on, you know, it was, you know, but he said rugs. Upholstered furniture, upholstered furniture also is generally bad for air quality, um, and. Sponges that you let slip down behind the sink. Anyway, just passing it on. Okay.
Any other comments?
I just started, I gotta. You don't have a five-year plan?
Do you have any aspirations about what you're expecting on that?
Remember that first meeting is? I'm sure we'll bring something back.
Principal's report.
Yes, you could take a copy and pass it along, on Friday, May twenty-fourth. Students and staff of SES were active participants during our annual community service day. Um, some of the projects included campus cleanup of trash and brush, beautification of our butterfly garden and volunteer work at the town library. Um, additionally, our fifth grade class created a video that's going, that was rolled out at our final all-school sing. Um, but that focused on our school values of perseverance, empathy, respect and responsibility. Um, earlier on in the year, uh, Sunderland staff identified what values we wanted to instill the most in our. Um, uh, for our students here at Sunderland, we came up with those and so our plan for next year is to really roll those out. And kind of bring those values to life and what they look like, um, during our everyday school lives here at, here at Sunderland. Uh, walk and roll recognition, the Massachusetts Safe Roots to School Organization recognized Sunderland Elementary School. As an exemplary program, um, we've been holding walk and roll to school days for the past seven years. This, the spring event, uh, which was held a couple of weeks back, uh, saw over three hundred students, staff and. Participants, uh, or parents participate, um, I'm always come flying in, uh, the parking lot in my, uh. My bike from Deerfield and I, I saw a father, uh, biking down our, our driveway and he had his sport jacket on. And dress pants and I beat him to the door and then I turn around and it's Mr. Modesto. And so Mr. Modesto was, uh, an active participant in his first walk and roll.
Yep.
Um, but that was great, and then, uh, we also received a citation from State Senator Joe Comaford. And State Representative Natalie Blaze, um, in recognition of this accomplishment. Our ELL teacher, Matthew Howell, uh, is the driving force behind making the walk and roll school event, uh, huge success each and every year. Uh, other events that have taken place, uh, we had our spring concert and that featured students in grades three through six. Performing on the strings instruments and wind instruments and then also our four through six chorus. On Saturday, June, what day was that, was it the first or second? Um, Saturday, June first, the annual town pavement, uh, road race was held at Sunderland Elementary School. That's put on by All States Materials Group, the race this year, um, acted as our big fundraising kickoff for the. Early childhood playground, um, All States is planning on donating some money, I'm not sure yet. Uh, it just so happens that one of our school committee members, Keith McFarland, was the winner for his age group. And he won a cash prize that, uh, qualified him for a massage app.
I'm really sense. I couldn't catch Mr. B.
We had sixth grade graduation, uh, we had a staff breakfast where we honored Louise Law, our director of curriculum and. Instruction for the district, Roberta Jaffe, our occupational therapist and Karen Green, the. Uh, coordinated family outreach, um, uh, individuals for our district as well. We had an all-school sing, field day and spring carnival. And that's the report.
I'd just like to say, I went to the sixth grade graduation because we got a nice invitation and I thought, why not? You know, you get to go to the school and you have absolutely no responsibility, it's not so bad, um, and I'd just say a couple of things, first, I thought it was great. Uh, the, the whole thing, I just sat there and enjoyed it and I thought you did a great job and I thought the. You know, we talk about diversity, but boy, it sure is on view right there and, and, uh, all the different kids and. Uh, adults in that room and so on, and it was, uh, quite, really quite something and, um. It was, uh, uh, it was a very impressive, just, uh, you know, little view of part of the school in action over the course of a year. But I was very impressed, um, I will say again, our committee member, Mr. McFarland here, uh, his daughter got an award for. Being, uh, I don't know what the proper term is, but certainly a very distinguished member of that graduating sixth grade class. I thought that was pretty cool, um, and, uh, the only thing I'm gonna say, and I know there's probably no solution at all, but boy, the acoustics are.
Something we're working on.
And I don't know what could be done, I don't know if, what the. And I don't know what could be done, I don't know if, what the possibilities are, but boy, it was, it was tough.
Yep.
Um, I, I've heard it from, you know, we have town meetings in there, and it's really tough. And, you know, there, that's the first time I've been there for something other, you know, some sort of meeting other than a town meeting, and it's like, oh, man, this is just really hard and so on. So I don't know if there are any possibilities, and I don't know how we move a little bit in the direction of making it better or if we're just up with it, I don't know.
I'm not sure if it's listed on that report, but yeah, it is, it is something where we can.
I think it was, it was all, I was there too, it was excellent, it was great. I love the tradition of the, uh, seniors, Sunderland resident from Frontier coming back and giving a speech to the kids. It's one of my favorite parts.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Uh, this year's guest speaker was Elizabeth Ukwah, who's graduating from Sunderland. This year she helped, or some, from Frontier this year, in the fall, she helped lead the volleyball team to their fourteenth consecutive Western Mass title. And Elizabeth will be going to the University of Hartford in the fall to study elementary and special education. So, yeah, she did a phenomenal job.
It was, it was just a great event. Thank you.
Outstanding.
Thank you. Uh, principals' report?
All right. Um, we'll talk about negotiations in executive session. Um, I wanted to recognize Judy's last day working, well, last public meeting with us. Um, I think she, um, certainly helped carry the torch through difficult time, a difficult year, and there's a lot of, um, a lot of stress on you.
Yes, it was.
Um, I just wanted to thank you at your last meeting here, you know, for doing all that and helping us out. Coming back from principalship here many years ago.
Thirty years ago.
What years were you principal?
I was here from eighty-six to early eighty-eight.
Cool.
Thank you for, for your help. Um, the director of facilities search is ongoing, and we're down to some finalists now, and hopefully they'll be answered by the beginning of next week, I think we should be somewhere along there. My evaluation is out there, if you haven't done it already, uh, please submit that. The, um, there won't be a summer meeting, we'll talk about that, we'll talk about the, uh, right now, it's not necessary for a summer meeting, we're hoping that the collective bargaining would be at a point where we'd need a summer meeting, um, but really, even if we had wrapped it up, um, it'd probably take till September before the union would be able to get in place anyway, so, um, that's still gonna happen. Right now, the summer retreat, I, I call it a retreat, but I guess it's just summer administrative meeting, because a retreat sounds like something fun, uh, is this week, we're doing twenty, twenty eighth to twenty first. We have, um, on Thursday, we have a, uh, it's when we're into, the mistresses are gonna need to review, um, a lot of information about in-goal setting for next year, um, collectively. We're gonna look at that family survey that went out, we're gonna look at, um, our current goals, um, our current improvement plans, what progress we've made, and some areas that we haven't been touching upon, um, and kind of working together and kind of come up with some direction for next year, including professional development plan. Um, and then the next day, we have a work day, and I call it a work day because they don't work any other day. Right there? Um, I sell that joke, it can work. Um, but we call it a work day because I really, um, a lot of things that our principals in our districts are doing singly, and they really need to be uniform across the board, from forums and where the forums are posted, and why aren't they all linked on the same websites, and when you go to get a field trip forum, it really should look the same in every single building. I mean, you can have your local touches on things, but, you know, legal stuff and that kind of thing should be the same. And while there are many similarities, they aren't across the board the same, and I wanna kind of streamline some of those things. Our handbooks, um, language in our handbooks, making sure that every single one of the parent handbooks and student handbooks, um, across the board are, are streamlined and that kind of stuff. So, um, we have a long list of stuff that there's no way we'll do it all in one day, but we're gonna start cracking at it on Friday and see what we're getting. So I think, I think principals are, I don't wanna use the word excited, but are looking forward to that because it is, each of them alone have five days, or five of them singly working on each document. Instead, they're gonna be coming together, sharing what they already have, you know, and, uh, that kind of stuff. So, which is kind of an idea that I saw, um, and I think they're very agree. Yeah, they're already, we're asking for a second day, we, we got to the first one, so we'll see if they want a second day after Friday, but we'll see how that works out. The other thing is, uh, the twenty-seventh to twenty, following Thursday and Friday, we're bringing in, I say we're, unfortunately, we got notified last week that, um, our presenter from the Curriculum Management Solution, um, which is a, a firm, it's a national firm, um, that looks at, um, does a lot of audits, especially larger school districts, looking at, um, their curriculum and how it relates to instruction in the classroom and how, um, it's being translated and, you know, for consistency across all schools, and that all principals are learning what to look for, how to evaluate. Evaluating curriculum, not just instruction, many of us would sit in the classroom and say, wow, that was a good teacher based on, but is there a translation from curriculum to instruction and that fluid kind of thing going on? Um, unfortunately, that training's been canceled, but I am talking about it because right now, we're, um, I've sent a couple, our early childhood coordinator and another principal to their training. We have several levels, level one, level two, level three, um, and I've already gotten positive emails from them that it's been tremendous there, and there may be, I'm talking to Ben about either, um, going to a local one or trying to figure out training for him, or a national one coming up, but I want everybody to get on the same page, so that when we, when you look at moving the bar and how do you improve instruction in the classroom, if you have above-average teacher, which many of our teachers are, how do you then move the next step? And it's gonna be about aligning curriculum and, um, you know, what's being taught and in, in, in the end, within that instruction, um, model, having some direction. So that's what we're looking at. And this is a group that Sarah Mitchell has been working with, who's the director of secondary education, um, for many years. She actually parts, is part of one of their audit teams that go out. She's done audits of, like, New Haven Public Schools, San Antonio Public Schools, New Orleans, um, some of these really big offices where these guys, this group comes in with a large group to look at full what's going on and, and look at deficit where things aren't happening and how to improve. And so, um, we kind of all agreed that looking at improving about not only what we see in the classroom, but what can we do about it, um, is an area that professional development needs to go for our principals, right? Yeah. Yeah, don't say no. Um, good. So that's what I got there.
Great.
Nice. So I believe that takes us to the, uh, so, make a motion, uh, pursuant to MGL chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A two, uh, we go to executive section, uh, to conduct strategy assessments and preparation negotiation with non-union personnel, or conduct collective bargaining sessions, or not, that's before we come today. Contract negotiations with, uh, yeah, non-union personnel.
May I recommend that you do both executive sessions, because one conversation you made with the other, so the other one is.
And executive session, Mass General Law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, A three, to discuss strategy to respect collective bargaining, uh, union thirty-eight features and instructional assistance.
Correct. You're gonna have to roll call.
Um, yeah, I'll second.
All right. Uh, we'll call, uh, Keith?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Daisy?
Yes.
And Greg Justin. All right, so.
And usually I think people say if we got any more business, we'll come out.
There may be a vote coming out of that, depending on what the committee decides to do. So you may go back and do, and break the session for a vote.
So it's on chairman?
Yep.
It's your, I mean, your decision, but it's on.
I was just, I was just for.
It's unfortunately, that's why we're going to executive session. We've done this, we've had this problem before in another meeting, so he knows the drill.
I don't think executive session.
All right, uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, um, I'm trying to go down the personnel. I can't. Uh, the motion would be to, um, accept the non-union salary schedule as presented.
Second.
All in favor? All right, unanimous. Let's see. And, uh, adjournment. Most adjourned.
So we have no meeting scheduled until September?
Correct.
Okay, and is there ever a case where a meeting would have to be called or anything?
In case of an emergency.
Happened last year.
Yeah, I mean, if there was a facilities emergency or some reason that I needed, that would be the only reason. I mean, we had several last year due to administrative changeovers, but.
Right, that's what I remember.
So that's what kept us busy last summer, but if everything goes as it should, we should not see each other until September.
And I'll, Mr. Chairman, I move Lee adjourned.
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
We adjourned.